Call this special meeting of the James City County Service Authority Board of Directors to order. Good afternoon. Afternoon, Mr. Powell. If you could call the roll.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here. Board discussions, authorization for one-time bonus payment and leave payout. Mr. Powell.
Good afternoon. The resolution before you authorizes a one-time bonus to service authority employees who have been employed since before July 1st of 2022 in the amount of $1,000. And it also authorizes a one-time option for employees to buy or do a leave payout. Employees would have to maintain a balance of 80 hours if they were to take advantage of this option. Employees, there's a, and there's a scale of how much you can, you can get paid out for depending on your years of service. For the service authority, the total amount that it would cost for both of these initiatives is just under $200,000, and staff recommends approval.
I would just like to ask if you could just explain for the public how we're going to take care of that financially.
Sure, sure. So, we've had a significant amount of turnover this year, so there is a significant amount of savings from, from turnover. The, the off, the, the resolution does authorize an appropriation from the unrestricted fund balance, which there have been significant contributions to that fund balance over the last couple of years as we have had ample amount of revenues over expenditures. So, the resolution appropriates it from the fund balance, and the combination of that and turnover savings will, will pay for the, for the just under 200, just under $200,000 in expenses. And I should note, the 200,000 is the maximum. I mean, that depends on how many people actually take advantage of the, of the payout, but that would be the maximum amount. It could be less.
Thank you. Is there a motion or any more further? Thank you. Mr. Powell.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye. We have no closed session today, so with that, I will ask for a motion of adjournment till 5:00 PM on December 13th for the regular meeting.
Motion.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order for the purpose of a work session, business meeting. Mr. Stevens, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
I'd like to request that the board make the motion to amend the agenda to add a discussion about the James City County Marina as an item under Board Discussions.
They're moved.
Stevens, please call the roll.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, our, we have a presentation by Mr. Carnifax from the James City County Parks and Recreation Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm excited to be here today because to recognize not only our staff, but James City County. I think every award and accreditation reflects positively on this board, our citizens, and the entire James City County team, because it is a team effort, and your leadership and your support, I think, is what maintains that and helps us do the best we can to serve the residents of James City County. Before I begin with the accreditation, I wanted to introduce Linda Knight. Linda is on our Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. She works at William &amp; Mary, and I want to thank her for coming out and supporting us tonight, or this evening. I keep thinking board meetings are at night, aren't they? This afternoon.
Just had lunch, Josh.
Yeah. So, the accreditation process. We were accredited first time in 2017, and of course, five years goes by faster than any of us want to go by, but it did. And so, this year in 2022, we started the reaccreditation process. CAPRA is the Commission for Accreditation for Parks and Recreation Agencies. It's made up of professionals throughout the country, and both practical practitioners and education folks from universities that sit on the commission. There are 10 core areas, 36 fundamental standards. That means we're required to reach all 36 of those fundamental standards, and then 90% on your accreditation initial, you need to get 90% or another 118. For reaccreditation, you got to get 95%. So, this year, we had to get 95%. I'm excited to say that we received full approval. We did not miss any, any standard at all, both the first time and the second time around. So, kudos to our team for making that happen. Part of the visit is, pre-COVID, we would, visitors would come from throughout the country, and, and we would have three visitors come and review our files, spend three days here in James City County, going through our files, looking at our standards, going out and visiting some of our facilities. Once COVID hit, we went to the virtual meetings, and we had a virtual this year as well. And so, everything was over Zoom. We met, instead of three days, it was a five-day process, which took a little bit more staff time to manage that, but we were able to do so. In the future, I think what CAPRA is talking about doing is, your initial accreditation would be in person, and then the reaccreditation would be the Zoom at least every 10, you know, every five to 10 years, and then they would might go back. It does save us money when we go through the reaccreditation if we're not paying for transportation for visitors to come in from other areas. So, I think that you'll see that for reaccreditation in the future. What do I, the benefits? I mean, I think there's a significant number of benefits for us to maintain accreditation. You know, I think it assures that we're providing a high level of service to our residents, and it's not about the size of our budget. It's not about the number of facilities we have, but it's how we use the resources we have, both staff and others, to provide that service to our customers. It ensures that we're meeting these national standards and best practices. And so, for me, it's really about benchmarking. You know, we all might think we're doing a great job one day, but we're, what are, what are we validating that against? Our opinions? And for me, the accreditation process is we're benchmarking against other standards throughout the country. Credibility and heightened professionalism, I think one of the things that our team, the visitation team said about us is, they couldn't believe the number of senior-level managers and folks that had been in the James City County for a long, the length of time that they have been. And, you know, I've been here 25 years, and several have been here longer than me sitting behind you. And it's, it reflects, I believe, not just on us, but this board and the community, both on how you treat your employees. And, you know, I, I think it says a lot about James City County. So, thank you all for doing what you're doing to, to maintain that. The other is continuous systematic evaluation and long-term planning. You know, I think that's important for any private-public sector is to make, have a plan, stick with it, and every year, measure yourself against that. And as you all know, we do a good job, James City County, at doing that. And finally, you know, it's a lot of work. We started 18 months before the reaccreditation team getting our standards in place. So, the folks sitting here, you know, started, these were core leaders, and we had other staff involved. So, it, it, as, as much as it is stressful at times, you know, but when you sit down and you look at the, what you need to do, what you've done over the last four years, and your accomplishment, and you get the feedback, it does instill pride in, in our organization. And, and for me, that's a significant part of this process. There's over 10,000 Parks and Rec agencies in the United States, and there's only 197 that are accredited. So, for me, that's, that's significant, and we stand out. In the state of Virginia, there's only 14 agencies that are accredited, and, and we're one of those groups. I'd like to at least introduce the folks that were our team leaders. And we're all, what I like to do is, at the end, everybody come up and we do a photo, if, if that works for you all at the end. But Angie Sims was the chair, Amy Fedor, Nancy Ellis, who Nancy, you remember, she retired, and she was involved in our first, but she wanted to be involved, so she did a lot of it virtually and stayed in touch, and she worked to get us through this reaccreditation. Of course, the weak link there was John Carnifax on Core Three, but he was able to survive and get, get, get it done. Carla Brittle on Human Resources, Pauline Financial Management, Arlana Programs and Services, April Melton Program Services, Alister took Facility and Land Use, Rob Ensley, Public Safety Law Enforcement, Jared Herr, also in Public Safety and Law Enforcement, and then Kelly Herbert, Evaluation, Assessment, and Research. I just wanted to share a little story about that Core 10, Evaluation, Assessment, and Research. That's a challenge. I've, I've been serving on review teams for probably 20 years and going and evaluated other departments. And that one there is tough, because a lot of departments, they don't set up a, a trial, which I know some of you all, I challenge you at times, "Well, let's try this." And then we evaluate it, and then either it's successful or not successful. When we, when we monitor that, we get feedback from the public. And one of the things, it's, you know, we're out there trying to be creative, take on new initiative, and this is one that we, we easily accomplished, but it takes effort to go out there and try those things. And I think one of them that we, we had recently was the Off-Leash Area that some people loved it and some didn't, out at Jamestown Beach Event Park, but that was one of them. So, this picture here is the folks that were at our NRPA conference and that received the accreditation award. And at this time, I'd like for everybody to come up and, and get a picture. And you notice they kept me out of that, because that was probably a good thing.
Before we bring everybody up for a picture, can, can we just maybe ask a couple of questions or?
Sure, sure.
Any comments people might have?
Just say, congratulations. We have a fantastic Parks and Rec. I, I mean, from the time I moved here, when my young, my oldest was two years old, I got involved with stuff with our Parks and Rec. And I came from, this is my home, but I, that was, came from Charlotte, and where there was a lot going on. And one thing I was really worried about was, what was there going to be here? And there was so much to offer. And so, you look at the rec side of it and everything that you do for, from all ages, and then you look at the park, I mean, our parks. What a beautiful place that we live in, and a lot of that has to do with our parks and all that we offer. So, I congratulate you on your extremely hard work, and I appreciate it very much. I think it is one of the things that just, is just so great about this community, for sure. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Very well said. Ditto.
And I'll just add that as part of this process, I was interviewed by the team, the CAPRA team, and it was hard for me to get a word in edgewise, really, because of all the praise they were lavishing on our staff and the quality of the programming facilities and parks that, that we do have available for our citizens. I'll just add that, in my own experience, you know, the organization, and I think this really has a lot to do with that fellow who says he doesn't have really much to do, is so responsive to requests for thinking about something new, some other opportunity, whether it's a, a, an angry mob of folks wielding pitchforks demanding that we have a more pickleball courts, or whether it's a group of kids that I can remember years ago coming forward and saying, you know, "Can we have a skate park?" Or, or somebody whose kid came back to visit and said, "Why don't you have more dog parks?" It's always, you know, "So, let's see if we can do that." And, and I just think that it's a real credit to the county that we have such great leadership and such a committed staff of senior leaders who have really invested a tremendous amount of time, effort, and care in providing the best facilities that a community this size can have. I note that of the 197 that are out there, I bet we are among the smaller communities that are represented. And it's just-
Farthest population, yeah.
It's just remarkable that not only do you produce such wonderful events, but that the citizens recognize it to the point where I think it's fair to say that our Parks and Recreation Program is better funded than many, many Parks and Recreation Programs across the country, because people are willing to pay for services and have their taxes go toward the service. So, thank you all for the great work that you've done.
Thank you, Mr. McGlinnan.
And now, picture time.
Picture time.
Since there's so many, shouldn't we just stand back here?
You might do better just behind him. I don't know.
Can we stand back here?
It works better for y'all.
Since there's so many, we could stand back here.
Can they get us in the picture? Can you get us, Scott, get in here. Can you get us back here, Jason?
Don't encourage.
Thank you all so much.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Now, Chair McGlinnan, I do have to, I don't think pickleball players come with pitchforks, so maybe pickleball paddles. I mean, I just, I have to, I have to protect the pickleballers out there.
I can think of one group that had pitchforks, but not, not the pickleball. So, thank you for those fine comments. Well, it's very much appreciated, and thank you for your continued support. So, the, the next is kind of, we added it on, because we had our state conference last week, and we were fortunate enough to receive some awards from the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society. There were over 450 delegates in Virginia Beach last week from throughout the state. And so, we were able to get, obtain some awards. And again, the awards, I think, reflect positively on this community, this board, and, and our staff, and, and all the departments, because they're all a collaborative effort. And I'm just going to walk through each award, and then we'll do a picture at the end, instead of pulling them each out. So, the first award was Best New Environmental Sustainability. And I'm sure you all have seen this one before, because it's, I think this might be the third award that this project won. And you're familiar with it. It's the Chickahominy Riverfront Park Shoreline Stabilization, Protecting County Resources and Property. You know, we received a $778,000 grant, and so it was completed last year. And the folks that were directly involved, Daryl Cook, Barry Moses, Jeff Lauk, and Alister Parkinson from our staff. So, kudos to them. I think that's at least the second, if not the third time that, so thank you all for supporting that effort, too, I think. And that will protect the property for years to come. Best New Program, Park Scavenger Hunt. That was a, a program that we started this year, and that happened at, by the hard work of Sarah O'Reilly. Sarah is a new person to the staff. Sarah, would you wave? Terry Martin, Annalise Ricker, and Scott Ammon. All of those folks work out at Freedom Park, and Sarah is our program manager, park coordinator out there. The next award, Most Creative Marketing Piece, and you all, you all know Angie. She's been, I think she might have been one of those employees that have been here longer than I have, 25, even though she looks a lot younger. Most Creative Marketing Piece, Rec TV. If you've been to the Rec Center, you see we have several of them throughout. We're advertising our programs. We do sponsorships. If any of the businesses want to get their name up there, and we just give out good information. And it, and it received a state-wide award. And that's a cool picture of Angie's dog there. Most Creative Marketing Strategy, Rec Connect, which is our before-and-after-school program, summer program. It's been around for 35 years, and it received an award for the marketing strategy and that logo that our staff developed there. Kelly Herbert, April Melton, Katrina York, and Zali were involved in making that logo. Snapshot Moment. This is a picture that somebody may take at an event. And so, the Boo Bash at the beach, which I think is third year, fourth year? Third? Third year. It's kind of a twist on, yeah, well, pre-CO, yeah. So, anyway, it's our event out there at the beach, and this picture that was taken there, led by Joy Johnson and Vida, won the snapshot moment for the state. And last two awards, Individual Awards, President's Award, that's given out by the president of our, of our association every year. Kelly Herbert won the President's Award. She's been involved in the Leadership Training Institute, which is an educational program that we provide, and she's been involved with it for a couple years. And Kelly received the President's Award, which is a major accomplishment. And last, but not least, the Fellows Award, which is given to one professional a year, was given to Arlana Fontleroy for her contribution, not just to VRPS, but to, but to the community. And so, I wanted to take a moment just to, to read some of her contributions, not just to the society, but to the locality. It's about 32 pages, but I'm going to narrow it down. I'm going to narrow it down to just a few bullets. She's been a member of VRPS for 20 years. She's been a member of VRPS for 20 years. She's a Certified Parks and Recreation Professional, member of the National Recreation and Parks Association. She served on the VRPS Board of Directors and was the president. Conference co-chair and chair multiple times. Service Area Vice Chair and Chair. Summer Survival Planning Committee. Professional Certification Board. Outstanding New Professional Award. And President's Award. In her community and in this area, she serves on the Black History Committee, School Health Initiative Program Committee, Peer Mediation Steering Committee, and then, of course, was involved in our CAPRA. She also serves as on the Williamsburg, Greater Williamsburg Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, Steering Committee for a local nonprofit youth service provider, Leadership and Planning Ministry at her church, and Lead Historic Triangle Leadership Program. So you can see her impact on this community and the state has been significant, and it was a well-deserved award. So let's give her a big round of applause. All right. I think that's, other than that last picture there, and thank you to you all. I appreciate the time, and if we could get one more picture with the awards, that'd be great.
Same thing.
Congratulations.
Parks and Recreation, you know, you go here, you go there. That's where you're supposed to be.
I need you guys, actually, can I get you guys on the other side? I need two at the end every year, I'm sorry. You guys all, you all.
And now one backup.
Alistair, how does it feel to stand next to Katrina? All right, there. Now, Alistair, you're still not. Perfect, perfect. All right, one, two, three. Great.
Well, thank you all very much for being here today, and I know that all the presenters to come will appreciate your staying around to witness it. You don't really have to do that. We now move on to the consent calendar, and we have a number of items today. Let me just begin by saying the first is abatement of unsafe structures, 7259 Merrimack Trail and 1320, 1320A Moses Lane. We have authorization to amend the terms of the memorandum of agreement with the Economic Development Authority for property located at 2054 Jamestown Road. We have authorization for one-time bonus payments and leave payout. We have a contract award of $11,000, $111,877 for emergency communications center boiler and pumps replacement. We have contract award for $219,000 for Sanford Buwaner Stadium locker room HVAC replacement. Grant award of $41,030 for Commonwealth's Attorney, Virginia Domestic Violence Victim Fund. Grant award of $333,377,500 for school security officers, Williamsburg James City County Schools. Grant award of $6,108 for Virginia Department of Forestry. Minutes adoptions. Opioid settlement funding of $150,670. Purchase of property located at 5300 Old Town Road. And finally, the replacement of uninterrupted power supply at the emergency communications center at 51, I'm sorry, 3131 Forge Road, Toanow, Virginia. And any member wish to pull any item?
I don't need to pull it, but on number three, I was just hoping that Mr. Stevens or Sharon or someone could give a brief description on, like we did with Doug, how we're gonna do this.
Yes, ma'am. And again, we are following the same, I guess, payout that Doug was recommending of a $1,000 bonus payable to our employees, 500 to full part-time employees, and then the option of selling some of their leave back to us a week for those with 10 years, 10 to 20 years could sell two, and over 20 years could sell three, with a maximum payout there of $3,000. In terms of funding it, what we're recommending is an appropriation of our unassigned fund balance. We finished fiscal year '22 with about a $16 million surplus. And so again, a lot of that is due to vacancy savings and revenues coming in better than we had estimated. And I will tell you, our staff during that time has had to continue to provide services with less people onboard to help, filling in the gaps, working extra time, doing all those things to serve the community. And it moves from department to department in terms of vacancies and the challenges we faced. We felt, Doug and I both, that it was a reasonable thing to recommend this $1,000 bonus. And then the vacation is an ongoing liability for us anyway. It provides an opportunity for those that, while we want them to take time off, this typically is geared toward those that have more time on the books than maybe they can use. And it will allow them, rather than feeling forced to take that extra week or two, the opportunity to maybe sell some of that back to us and let us reward some of their effort and inability to be off with that payment as well. So any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion.
We have a motion to approve. Mr. Stevens should call it all, please.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Now move on to board discussions, and the first item is the American Rescue Plan Act Funding Update. And Mr. Stevens?
Yes, Chairman, members of the board, just a quick review. A year ago this time, we were talking about our American Rescue Plan Act financial funding or the $14.8 million that we had received. Next slide, Jason. And just as a brief review, it was approved by Congress in the spring of '21. It was a $1.9 trillion relief package, $65 billion direct aid to counties. Virginia counties received approximately $1.2 billion, and our share was just over $14.8 million with allocations based on population. Again, allowable uses really for areas, we could do it responding to the COVID public health emergency or negative economic impacts. We could provide premium pay to essential workers of local government. We could provide government services to the extent of revenue reductions due to the public health emergency. And we could make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. And from there, I do want to refer to a spreadsheet that I've handed out. It's the same, it's a lot of information, so I put it in one 11-by-17 handout for you. It is available on our website, so residents can see this as well. It was really to give you an idea of where we were. And our first number-one project up there was a grant special project analyst. And I will tell you, that is somebody that is managing in excruciating detail where our funds are and our status of that, and Stephanie Williams-Ardy, and she's in the back along with Sharon McCarthy. And I do appreciate their effort in sort of keeping us up to date to make sure we're spending it correctly and also staying on track with our deadlines. And so all of these are projects that you saw last November down through '21. There is a brief description of sort of the status of where we are. Some are in progress, some are about to get in progress. But at this point, we feel very comfortable with those first 21 are moving forward in a reasonable time, with the exception of Lower County Park. And that's a pretty big number there of $6.3 million. I'd hoped we'd have a site selected by now and be working with design. And we still have some time. These funds have to be encumbered by December of 2024 and spent by December of 2026, so we're not in a bad place today. Through some of these projects, we've had some savings. Our Satellite Office renovation, we did make the ADA improvements, but as we're talking about future government centers, we decided not to do some of the structural improvements in that area yet until we know where that will end up. So we've held off a couple hundred thousand there. A nonprofit grant, we were really $30,000 savings of what was allocated there. And our Capital Projects Coordinator, we have struggled to fill that, and we have recommended and you approved a different position for that $67,000 later. Also, the business and hospitality grants, line 21, we did not make that award as we had reached out to the state and received separate funding of $900,000, which our housing and EDA folks had administered, that we have provided. So at this point, we were reallocating those funds and just wanted to circle back with you to see if you have concerns with any of those. But that generated 1.1 million in savings. They're on line 22. The only other piece that's in there that is unusual, that you hadn't seen before, is the Police Department compensation adjustments and the Fire Department compensation adjustments that were recently done. We did use part of that 1.1 million that were savings from the other projects to pay for that. They are an allowable expense under the ARPA funds. And part of our strategy going forward as we get closer to that December '24 timeframe will be to make sure we are spending this money before that deadline and maybe then coming back to you and holding general fund or money that doesn't have a timetable on it for other projects on this list as we get closer to the December '24 timeframe. Outside of that, everything added on through line 21 you had seen before, line 24 to 27, were extra. And then we do have approximately $224,000 that is currently unallocated from this $14.8 million that we received in ARPA funds.
I'm sorry, you lost me on the tourism, because you said something about housing.
Excuse me, the tourism and hospitality grant was the grant program on the business side. We had a business that was meant to be a business-related grant on that $500,000. We received $900,000. We were applying for funding as well through the state CDBG program for businesses. We did $15,000 grants to about 75 businesses, but that's what that was, in lieu of this $500,000, we spent that $900,000 that we received from the state for that. So we pushed that down to these funding of police and fire, that pay increase that we did back in September. We could certainly reallocate money if that was a strong desire of the board, but we believed we met a significant part of the need that was out there relative to the business grant needs.
How much of that we did was tourism and hospitality related?
I would have to get back to that. It wasn't just restricted to that.
Right.
But I certainly will pull that back up. I can pull back to the list of businesses and make a pretty good determination of that for you.
Okay.
I'll be happy to provide that.
That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Are you less satisfied with the amendments to the plan? Yeah, and I'd suggest that at this point, we've got about $225,000 roughly of additional funding. And I suppose in the next few months, we'll see some outcomes that suggest whether or not we're over or under budget on some of these items and get a good sense of where we are before the budget season for next year.
Yes, sir. Or with this project, as these funds are allocated separately, we could certainly update those from time to time. And I expect we will do that as we go further along.
Great, great. Well, thank you for that update. I think that gives us a pretty good sense of where things stand. And I know the county administrator is always happy to answer any other questions we might have in that regard. We now have a presentation on short-term rentals. Mr. Holt is gonna present that for us, and we can have a discussion of this issue.
Your name, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. With some of the recent conversations that the boards had on short-term rentals, staff thought it'd be a good time to provide the board with some updates and some counts on how many short-term rentals we believe may be operating within the county. Had some help with this recently with a firm that specializes in tracking these types of uses. So as of this week, here's what we're seeing. We actually have approximately 370 short-term rentals that are actively listed within the county. For some of these rental units, the owner may list on more than one website or more than one platform. So the total number of listings, when you sort of take them all in, if you search all of those websites, will actually be closer to 573. But again, that's, all those listings are for 370 unique units. About nine of these listings are new within the last 30 days, and all of these listings are for minimum night stays between one and seven days. Now, for a bit of context, I'll look wash over you, we're not gonna end up having 370 SUP applications coming anytime soon, so no worries there. Remember that in the zoning ordinance, short-term rentals are generally permitted by right on property that's zoned R4. So that's gonna include places like Kings Mill, Greensprings, and Ford's Colony, all of which have single-family homes, but as you know, also have relatively large-size resort components to them. Mixed-use zoned places, so places like Newtown, are five-zoned properties, that's our multifamily district. And we also have a lot of timeshare properties, some of which are zoned R2. They're, of course, by definition, as a short-term rental, so they can occur there by right. So these four categories represent a significant majority of where our short-term rentals are located. And as such, as mentioned, zoning approvals and legislative applications are not required.
Can I just interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Holt, so up these 370, you're saying a good number are accounted for by these uses. So when we talk about the R2, for instance, the timeshares, is that the timeshare community or is it the individual units that we're talking about?
It'd be the individual unit. So like, if somebody doesn't stay there when they have their week, they can turn around and flip it back out on Airbnb, for example, is what we're seeing. So taking all of those by right properties and all of those by right listings out of the mix, and looking at the remainder countywide where SUPs would otherwise be required, staff believes that this time there are approximately 32 short-term rentals being listed that would otherwise need legislative approvals. You'll see very general approximate locations noted there in the green dots on the map on the screen. So while we do have a lot out there, less than 10% are currently in violation of the zoning ordinance. So with this information, of course, staff has already started reaching out to these property owners, and will continue to follow up with those. That concludes our short update on short-term rentals today. I have Kristi Parish here, zoning administrator, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So my question would be, while they may be allowed, there are tax implications on that property that they have to follow. So who is following up to make sure that that is being taken care of?
I don't know. So what we've done to date is look at this through the lens of the county zoning ordinance. You know, the work efforts to date have not included the Commissioner of the Revenue from the county staff's side. So I would have to defer to him on what's being collected there, both in terms of room nights or business licenses, et cetera.
Yeah, because that's an important component on the county side, too. I mean, we have people that are doing the right thing, that are paying the taxes that they're supposed to, getting the proper business license that they're supposed to. So
And Ms. Larson, I'll reach out to the Commissioner of Revenue and see where he is in terms of being able to work through that process. And we certainly would assist him wherever in terms of notification and trying to help. I think that is his to do, but we'll certainly assist where we can. And I'll follow up and let you know where he thinks he's headed and how he'd get there.
Okay. That'd be great. So is this something that you're gonna keep monitoring now that you have this, is this a software program? You're working with a third-party contractor, I take it? Are we in a contract with them to keep doing this?
It's not an annual appropriation. We sort of did it on a trial basis this first year with some savings that we had from last fiscal year. So it's a one-year annual license. You know, I think we're gonna have to sit down as staff and really see if there's enough value to continue doing this moving forward into future years. It's not an item that we currently have budgeted in the fiscal year '24 plan year.
I would certainly hope if we can collect the number of taxes that we are not being collecting, if the Commissioner of Revenue will be cooperative with us, that will, I would think, would pay for us to be able to do something like this on an annual basis.
Mr. Holt, do we have an annual subscription?
Correct.
So you can run this report in late May or June again and sort of get a sense of where we are 10 months from now. So maybe we would look at it one year and decide, we maintain it every year, or maybe we do it every two or three years, but something to monitor that number and ensure that our numbers are pretty close to keeping us in compliance. I think that would be, would make sense going forward.
And then just be, so some may be going on in neighborhoods where it's allowed, however their HOA may feel differently, but we do not get into the middle of the HOA allowing and what's happening in their neighborhood. That would be a different category.
Correct. That would continue to be a civil matter between the HOA and the landowner within the subdivision. We're only looking at it from compliance with the county zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Holt, some of these that are out of compliant, do you have a general idea how long this has been going on?
I think we can go back a little bit of time and see how long some of them have been listed.
We probably could. We probably could look at the database and see roughly when the first listing was added. Sometimes they'll drop it and then come back in. So we'll have to kind of take a look at it to see if they keep it historically of when they actually started to first advertise on there. So some of them will drop off because they have removed the listing for some reason or another, and then next month, they'll actually have it back on. Or we'll ask, reach out to them, and they'll take it off. we could get some.
We're talking years?
Not sure if years. I would imagine within the last couple of years, probably.
Thanks.
And can I, can I just ask, so the thirty, what, thirty-two cases we're looking at, how many of them should have applied for an S U P?
All thirty-two.
All of, all thirty-two?
Yes.
And are we following up on that?
We have started. We have, we have already sent three or four letters out now of repeated offenders or ones that have actually been denied on a certain, on a S U P. So we're starting with those first. Then the next round will be a general letter that says we've got notification that this is a violation. Please come in and talk with us. If they ignore us or whatever else, then we'll actually send them an official notice of violation to come into compliance. Reach out letter, then enforcement.
So a couple of years ago, I did sit in on a webinar put on by one of these commercial firms that does this work, and they seem to be doing it on a very regular basis for their clients, essentially because they, their suggestion was that these postings do pop on and off with frequencies. You know, many people, you know, would put them on at six o'clock or seven o'clock in the evening and pull them off at seven-thirty in the morning, figuring that county employees were not going to be working those hours and not really checking on them. I'm assuming that the more sophisticated third parties that are operating some of these systems may provide some guidance in terms of how you manage to avoid detection, if you will.
I don't know if they offer insight to avoid detection. Quite the opposite. You know, I think some of the consistent things that we're seeing across the board is a lot of these companies and firms really sell and market their services by how well they think their information is, both from an accuracy point of view and also from a documentation point of view, which you need when you go to pursue enforcement action. The current product that we're working with continuously updates. They have an automated system, all these bots and artificial intelligence that just crawl through the web and all of these listings all the time and continuously update. I think our list is refreshed probably at least once a week, but with that, we get photos of, you know, of everything and where they think the address is, and certainly makes tracking some of them down a whole lot easier.
And what we do when we identify one, we want to double-check that the information that we've received from the company is, we'll go out and take a picture of the actual house to make sure it's correct with the address and so forth, because I certainly don't want to send out a letter that could be false in any way. There's about three-hundred listings that say still have not identified locations for. I've clicked on several of those links. A lot of them are hotels, timeshares and so forth. There's a couple out there that I think we could probably track down. But when people advertise, a lot of times, they don't put distinguishing features on there until you actually book, so sometimes it's hard to identify that location. For example, they'll do the inside of the house, but they don't put any exterior features, so it's very difficult for not only staff, but the people that are doing the software to actually identify that listing. It's always going to be a struggle to catch them all.
And I don't think we want to be in a position of, you know, kind of being super policeman on this item, but I think what we do expect is that people operate on the same playing field. And a couple, just a couple of things that I think might be helpful to be put into, maybe some kind of a fact sheet or a fact page on our webpage, that, our website that basically says, you know, here's what the story is about short-term rentals in James City County. If you live in these zones, you've got the by, a by-right opportunity, but you still have obligations to make tax payments. And I think it would be important to list on that, to note on that as well, that basically ninety percent of those that are advertising in the county are doing so on, from by-right circumstances, which is information that we could then provide to the public and to our general assembly members so that they know that in fact, a significant number of our properties are operating without having to come for a special use permit, because we seem to have an erroneous reputation in Richmond in terms of being tough on short-term rentals.
So I guess I'm, I'm picking up on some hesitancy to be, to have people be compliant. Like, we're not going to continue this, we're questioning whether it's, and I guess my issue with that is that we have people that pay their tax. Why would we not expect that from everyone? We're asking that of our hoteliers. I mean, to me, if you're in a place that that is allowed, or if you come here and you, we do an S U P and you, great. I mean, hey, the more tourists that we welcome, but you need to do so the way that everyone, that the people that are following the rule of the law are having to do it. So to me, it would, I mean, I don't know how much this is costing. I don't know how much the line item was, but it would seem to me to be a good investment, and why would we not do that?
Ms. Larson, I think at the three-hundred-and-some number, it absolutely, I believe would pay for itself. If we get it down to ten or twenty, then we have to make that decision. Is that worth, and is it worth it yearly, or do we every year budget something and do it every other year or some frequency so we monitor what's out there? I do think there's value in knowing what's there, and certainly value in all folks that are operating a business, even though these are generally small business and maybe a side business for somebody, still we ought to have them in compliance. Some of that does take the cooperation, though, of our Commissioner of the Revenue on the business licensing piece, and I'm sure he'll be willing to work with us on that as well. So I'm not hesitant. I just don't want to, I don't want to spend fourteen or twenty thousand dollars to collect a hundred. And again, that's the part I'd want to make sure that from a financial feasibility standpoint, it makes sense to do.
Well, and I'd certainly appreciate an update on, I, if the Commissioner of the Revenue is not, if there is a hesitancy for cooperation in this matter, I'd really like to know and know why, because it's James City County, so.
Yeah. And may I suggest that, you know, our next work session, we may want to invite the Commissioner of Revenue so that we can question some of the things. You know, he may send a report, and then we're like, well, what about, and if he's here, we can kind of save him some time, too, and question him on, you know, what thoughts we're thinking, because if you look at it, and there's three-hundred-and-sixty-three, three-hundred-and-seventy or so out there, are they paying their taxes? You know, are, they may be legal to have that there, but are they paying their taxes? Now, going from thirty-two to three-hundred-and-seventy makes a big difference. So are they paying heads and beds and their tax, all the taxes they have to pay? Because, you know, I know I have to do them every month, and it's a pain, but that's the way life is. But, you know, if you're going to have that, you need to join me in the pain and, and pay your taxes. So, and in most of your time that we have more people book in the evenings, some on twelve, one o'clock, the phone rings, someone wants to book. And, you know, so, you know, by people cutting it off during the day, they're catching, still, they're catching the main part of the people that are looking because they're getting home, they're relaxing, they're sitting there watching, hey, let's go such and such. And they start searching, and a lot of night owls that, that come to Airbnbs, and, and they'll hit it eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning and say, hey, is it available? Can I come? And, and I know that Airbnb is, is doing better as far as taxing and that sort of thing, so hopefully they'll get, they'll get better at that. It'd be nice if they would do all the taxing and send it to the county, and it'd be a whole lot easier on the Airbnb people, because, you know, the hotels usually have somebody in there that's doing their books and all, and it transfers. But we Airbnb people, we just, you have to do it yourself, and if you miss it, it's a ten percent penalty. So if you missed a date to fill everything out, then ten percent more goes into the coffer of James City County. So I just missed mine by one day yesterday, so ten percent.
Pay up, Michael, pay up.
Thank you.
One, one other quick question. Did you, did you mention that some of the non-compliant ones are those who had applied for an S U P and were denied?
There's a few of them that have applied. Either they have withdrawn or were denied.
And they're still operating?
See, they're listed still active.
Now, now, I'm seeing with, with that, I'm seeing a sign, not only with this, but other cases that have come before us and are coming before us, are people that basically say, you deny me? Nah, the hell, I can't say that. But the heck with you. We're not gonna, um, you know, we're not, we're not going to apply. We're not going to abide by your rules. So catch us if you can, and if you can't, well, we may go years in the process. So is, there's something coming up on the horizon while people are doing this. And, you know, it makes me worry that some of our citizens are doing everything they're supposed to do, following all the rules, and there's a group over here that are benefiting where this group that is paying all the time is catching the blunt, and they shouldn't. It should be equal across the board. If we're asking one to do it, we all will do it, and if somebody is, there ought to be another stick or bat or whatever to, to take care of if you're not, you know, if you've been told you're not going to do this, it doesn't fit your area. And then they stub their nose at us and go ahead and do it. That, to me, is, is a higher level of breaking the law.
So Mike, you'd be looking into those situations first?
Actually, those letters have already been mailed.
Oh, that's good to know. Thank you.
I jumped on those first.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for the report. We'll look forward to hearing more about how things are working through. Okay. And we now have a third item, which is, we added to the agenda this evening or this afternoon, the Marina discussion. Mr. Carnet, welcome back.
I think the first part of the meeting was much more enjoyable than this. I was going to throw out the pitch for it, but I didn't want to do that.
If you're talking plumbing, then it's worth it in the weeds.
No, just, just a little bit of history, which I know most of you know the history here on the Marina. We've owned and operated that since two thousand and five, I think, before two thousand and seven, and we've had it under lease, and then we've operated it. And, you know, we, we bought the Marina at the same time we bought the Jamestown Beach Event Park, and that wasn't our desire at the time, but the owner said, you got to buy them both, and we did. We made some improvements, but over the last few years, our general services staff who go out and throw some Band-Aids on and make some minor repairs, it's become more of an issue. So Mr. Stevens and I thought it would be appropriate to have a third party, somebody that's in the Marina business, come and evaluate our two covered boat slips. So the report, the report was given to us in October, on October seventh. Our general services staff have reviewed it, met with, met with the county attorney and risk manager, and we've talked about it. I'm just going to quickly go through some of the slides that the third party put together, just if you haven't been out there recently. It kind of gives you a snapshot of issues. There's nothing pretty in here. So I think the bottom line I'll get to here in just a second, I'm just scrolling through quickly, is, you know, we took the twenty-six-page document, and I kind of boiled it down to one page here, and it kind of gives, summarizes where we're at, that either boathouse may be lost in the next northeast or heavy snow. While there is a desire to continue to provide services to the slipholders in exchange for rental fees, it is likely that the risks are not commensurate with the rewards. Current condition, conditions present liabilities to the owner with respect to personal injury, property damage claims. Recommend a risk assessment by the county's legal and surety agents. There's no sound way to significantly lengthen the service life of these boathouses. Replacement is much more viable and economical. So I think that kind of summarizes where we're at today. And I kind of wanted to kind of refresh your memory on, you know, here's the master plan for the Marina. It was approved twenty-twenty. Here's what we completed in phase one. Right now, everything but the fuel system is in place. All the other items have been completed. And then we, because the cost for the phase one was a million plus over what we had budgeted, we had to remove items F and T to get us down to close to our budget. So to complete F and T, I'm just providing you some rough estimates now. It's eight-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. And one of the things I want to mention on T is the transient slips. Shortly, we'll be putting out an RFP for a restaurant-type facility, a public-private partnership. So I believe it's important that we think about, one, that restaurant, if and when it becomes to fruition, that we have transient slips in there so people can come and use. Right now, just with Billsburg, it's a challenge at times during boating season, and F would give us additional revenue there that we, for the boat slips, that we didn't complete in phase one. So the next part of it is your existing covered boat slips. If we replace them now, cut, open slips, that means without a cover, you're looking at two-and-a-quarter million to do that. Now, there is other dredging that has to take place that's in that number, because when we did phase one, we didn't dredge around those, so that has to take place. We have a dredging permit, so we don't have to go back through the permitting process, but we would need to do that. And if we didn't cover, or this is if we didn't cover the boat slips, that's, and if we replace like with like, you're looking at another six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars to cover the slips. So one of the things that staff have discussed is, you know, should we come back with covered or save some money and not, and not cover them? So I think, you know, we're not, I don't think we're looking, you know, really here to give you the information, to get feedback on where you all want us to be in the quick, in the upcoming budget that we're working on. And then, you know, our plan is, because in consultation with our attorney and risk management, they would like for us to send a letter and have them out of this, you know, January sixteen at the latest. We have an, each owner has an annual lease. It expires on December thirty-first. So this is the time we send out any, any fee increases, any changes as we redo our leases. And I'll let Mr. Kinsman correct me if I'm wrong, but we legally have the authority to do this, to end this lease on December thirty-first. We wanted to give them as much time. I have talked to Hampton Marine Services who can, there are some boats in there that aren't trailerable. He feels confident he can get the boats out of there, the few that aren't trailerable and on land with his equipment. And then we would store them either on site there or across the street, somewhere on one of our parcels, and they would pay the dry storage fee that we charge and not charge them for, you know, if it takes them two weeks in January, you know, there'd be no fee. We just close the lease out on December thirty-first and give them two weeks to, to get, or longer, because we would send, our plan is to send, if the board is in support, the plan is to send an email and a letter out as soon as possible to notify everybody that is presently in the covered slips.
So I'm, are you saying that we would store the, all the, all the boats till people could get them somewhere else, or just the non-trailerable ones?
Well, the not, the trailerable ones, they'll have a choice. They could stay and pay the dry storage fee that we charge any, any boat owner. If they're storing, whether it's at Chickahominy or here, they pay for a storage fee on land, and then, or they can tow them out to another site, so they'll have that option. I think there are possibly up to six that may not have that option. Don't know that for sure, but just looking at them and some conversations our staff have had with some of the boat owners, there might be six that they don't have the ability to remove them, and they'll have to, they have to pay Hampton Marine to get them out of the water, and then we would, you know, store them either here or at another site during the time that it takes. And if we were to move forward with either F and T, if we wanted to do that, you know, in phases, we're looking at, you know, at twelve months, if we start immediately, like in January, on the design to get F and T done. If you're looking at, at doing both of the covered slips, whether they're covered or not, you're looking at an eighteen to twenty-four month to get them back in place. So, you know, you're not talking about a short turnaround here. So the boats will be out of the water for up to two years if we, if we go the full route. So if we, you know, there's some options there. If we did F and T in twelve months, that some of... If we did F and T in, in 12 months, that some of the ones that are under the slips now could move back in and, and take over some of the F, but it's not, you're looking at 16 slips there where we got about 44 under the cover now, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't satisfy that. And other note, I'd like, you know, it's right now, just as of yesterday, we have over 150 people on the waitlist, both in the covered and uncovered. Now, some of them are the same, that they just want a, a place to put it. So we have a, over 150 folks that are on a waitlist to get in to the Marina. So there's a demand out there for, for this.
What's our cost savings if we do F or you, I'm, I'm not asking you to tell me today, but FT and the two covered slips?
Well, I-
All in one?
Yeah, I think you're looking at those two and, and the covered.
Uh huh.
You're looking at 2.8 plus the 870.
Will there be a cost savings?
Oh, yeah. Any, yeah. I think you will see a cost savings the, if we combine them versus phasing them in. And that's, one, if you remember, that's what we talked about when we were doing Phase One.
Right.
And two, there was, you know, three quarters of a million dollar savings if we would have done the whole project versus, but, you know, COVID hit and-
Yeah.
A lot of things happened during that that nobody predicted.
That's right.
And I think you're seeing a lot of the cost increases that related to that, too.
I know the cover slips, I used to keep my boat in the, the cover slips. I know the cover slips are, you know, nice to have. That's a premium. Do we charge now a double for a cover slip compared to an open slip?
No, it's not double.
That's what we ought to look at is probably, if not double, maybe something close to that, because it's a benefit to keep it out of the wind and rain and all that, keep your boat covered. And we may recoup our amount we spend quicker, of course we will. And, but, you know, it's, it's, it's terrible to say, money's always tight. And, but if I had my, if I had my way, I would say, go ahead and work on FT, the two covered and M. I'd add M into the group with it.
Oh, and add the third.
Add M into it. And that way, I know that, and the county administrator's taking a deep breath and going, what? What's he doing? M's the other slip.
Yeah.
You know, and then that, because we have, we have the amount of people that need it and desire that. And, you know, if it's going to be two years anyhow, you know, we'll have more people in two years than we have right now. And, and it's a, that's a pretty good little goldmine in the long run for the county. Right now, of course, it's a, it's a drain, but it will, once we get this Marina up to where the standards it should be, which is our standards, and it'll be A, and if we're going to have something, you know.
Yeah, and I think regarding the fees, our, the next slide is really one of the fee increases we're proposing for the uncovered slips this year. And, and we'll get to that in a second, is, you know, every two years, we go out and do a market, and we are below the market, both in the uncovered and covered right now. And, you know, we raised it a little last year when we finished Phase One. And the challenge was, if we went to the market rate, we would charge the uncovered more than the covered, and the condition of the covered slips, if you remember, we proposed that last year, and you all got some, some feedback. And, and so we didn't raise that, and because of the conditions of the boathouses. So I think that's kind of the dilemma in, different dilemma now, but, you know, we're going to propose here, you'll see the slide, raising our uncovered slips up closer to the market rate. But I do think when the entire project is completed and you have a waitlist, any good business person is going to say-
Push the dollar.
The demand dictates, you know, the cost. And so we're, right now, hesitant to do so with the condition that we have in our covered slips, but I think when it all is said and done, we ought to be charging the market rate or a little above.
And those cover slips 20 years ago were in bad shape. And I know, I went down there, you know, within the last couple of weeks and just wandered through looking at them, and, and they are in rough shape. And, and I'd be worried about if we don't do something this year, then we have to wait to renew next year. We're that much further behind, we're that much more it's going to cost, and we're that much more liable than if those roofs collapse and we have people in the boat while they collapse. We could have a trap or could push a boat, you know, cause a boat to sink, and somebody not be able to get, get out of a boat. And, and I hope that would never happen, but, you know, then, then we got a life safety issue that we definitely don't want on our citizens. I know it'll irritate some people that they've got to move it, but if it protects them in the long run, and they live a lot longer and they'll get crushed by a roof, I'd much rather take the roof down.
Agreed. And the only other thing I wanted to add to that, we, I have been in discussion with a couple individuals about building a, a dry stack storage, either out here and/or Chickahominy Riverfront Park.
I know.
You know, so I think, you know, we may, we may see that in the future. Of course, both individuals are going to look at the county to help support that with infrastructure or some things where they would build it and operate it, and we would get some revenue. And as I've said to them, and, you know, whatever we put into it, we're going to expect to at least recover our costs over some period of time. So we're just in the kind of beginning discussions on that, but we've, you know, we've got at least two active individuals that are interested in pursuing that in the future. So, and I think that will help with that 150, because boat owners that I've talked to, whether it's covered, uncovered, there's quite a few that would pay the extra for, to call up and have your boat put in a stack storage, and you call, and they have it in the water when, when they get there.
Oh, definitely.
So I, I think that's another option that we'll be looking at from a private sector point of view.
I think bottom, or anything, just stick around.
A couple, couple of questions. From, from your perspective of trying to talk about terminating these leases, I guess, the end of December, is that sort of a, a, a legal consideration of, of liability that that's, that's a concern of, if we were to let it go another year like that, that we would be exposing ourselves to unnecessary liability?
Yeah, and I'll be, I'll let Mr. Kinsman jump in here correctly, but yeah, that was the gist of our conversation, is we're, once we provided a third-party evaluation and with the strength of their recommendations, that we were at more risk. We are at a greater risk than normal when these kind of comments are out there. And we knew going into this, if it turned out, we would be in this situation. But, you know, staff and boat owners out there have, have wanted us to make improvements, and we didn't want to go spend $250,000 to replace the roof if we knew we had to replace the whole thing in the next few years. And so I think that was it. But Mr. Kinsman may be able to add a little more on the legal perspective there, but I think that was the gist of the, our conversation.
I think that answers my question. And then my other concern would be, if we're going to look at, at various options, including the full-scale option my patriot here is advocating for, then what I, what I'm really interested in is, is what's the best mix? And, and what's the, what's the payback time? In other words, how long does it take us to recoup our costs on something like this? This, is this, or is this something where quite often, when we do public things like our rec center and everything, we know that it's never going to pay for itself, but we def, we defray a lot of the costs and stuff. How close does this come to actually paying for itself is what I, is a question I would have. And if, if, if it's not going to totally pay, then how close do we get? So it, it may influence my decision on what kind of a, an option you have of whether you have that dry stack storage, because I can tell you, you know, I've had, I remember even back in high school, it's a, a family that had, had a boat, and they'd call up on Sunday morning after church and say, we'll be there in an hour, play with the boat in the water. And they'd forklift that thing right down and be in the water, and when you left, they put it right back up in dry storage. And it, it, in my mind, that would, is a heck of a lot more efficient than, than having a big structure where you have, covered in, with pilings in, in the water and everything. Although larger boats, it's a little bit more difficult for folks, I think.
I, I think, I, I can't give you the quick answer on that, but I can run the numbers and tell you what the return would be over something like this, you know, and, and the, and the, how much it would take to recover. I can tell you from previous discussions, just with the dry stack storage and what the individuals are talking about spending for that, and if we were to put a million dollars in it, and, and let's say our lease payment was $100,000 that we got back out of, and we, it's going to take us 10 years for a dry stack storage, for us to recover our infrastructure improvements or to dredge that other, you know, so I do think it's going to take time. Now, our revenue, our operating costs out here are minimal, and, and our plus is very good now, but if you factor in the three and a half million we spent, another three and a half million now, or, or four or five, you know, that number of your, that payback number starts to be 50 years, you know. But let, let me run some numbers as part of the budget process and, and look at that and, and in several scenarios, take these scenarios you've put in here, all, or part of them, and see what the capital cost would be and what our revenue potential would be. But, you know, when I think about this site, it is, it is a destination now. And, and with the restaurant going in there, there's going to be other revenue that, it's, it's going to be more than Marina, and I think that was the board's desire in the beginning. And I think if you add the restaurant, the tasting room, dry stack storage, you know, it becomes something of a destination, a place that non-boaters will go to infrequent, like they do now with Billsburg. So, I mean, but we can look at the numbers from a revenue from a Marina and the capital cost, rolling all of that other into it, you know, won't be able to do, but I think we can give you some numbers.
Mr. Chairman, I'm with the board. If I could just add a little bit to it. I, I think, you know, for us, we're very sensitive to the boaters' needs, and it will be bad news for them when we tell them they have to remove their boats. It will be traumatic, it will be quick, it'll be wise and fast. The structure's been in bad shape a long time. It would take a lot of money to replace it. This consultant, really, we were trying to do that, see if there were simple fixes. There are not. And we do have a report that I think we have to, we have to get them out from under it the sooner, today wouldn't be too soon. Trying to work through January 15th is trying to be reasonable, and that's only good if nobody, if nothing happens to that structure between now and then. So that's the first message, at least from us. We are apologetic for the rush. We'll work with them, we'll try to have space, and we'll try to accommodate that. The second piece is, we've always gone with the leases, that once you have a lease, you can have the lease forever. I think that is something while we add some dockage potentially, and we could talk about that later, but at least want to mention the idea, yes, we go back, if I have a slip, I get the first dibs on that slip, so to speak, and I may own the slip forever. I'm not certain if that's where we as a county ought to be or not, and I'd want to have some conversation with you. And I don't think it's fair year to year to have it so it could switch out, because owning a boat is a long-term kind of thing for most. But it might be, we ought to talk about a lottery system, where maybe every five years, so many slips go up for bid, because the list we have that's 170 is probably more than 100 unique individuals, they'll never have a chance. As, you know, and again, if the Marina, to your point, Mr. Eisenhower, doesn't cover its total cost, then it ought to be some public good. And that's where I believe the Marina has been, what you've spent thus far, yes, we improved the dockage that was there, but you improved the water access for all our residents. And I think that would still be a part, if you had a lottery system, that you could defend that, that it's not a forever thing, that I get a good deal on a boat slip. Everybody would have an equal chance at some point. So you don't have to make that decision today, but I at least wanted to start thinking about that. If we add more dockage, anything we do for the covered boat slips is going to be almost two years, whenever you start. And I think to Mr. Hippel's point, we could work through getting a design number and come back to you with how to move on with the design, and let us talk through budget, how we move money around, and have all this as an option, if you're okay with that, we can talk through it. And then when we actually get bids, we could have an alternate that builds it all or doesn't. And I think, because there's some things that will make sense. We do have money in the out years of our CIP for the covered slips to replace those with open slips. So that money is not new money, it's just not programmed in the next year or two, it was further out than that. But we can have discussions during budget time with you on where we are and what makes sense in terms of moving it forward. So we'll try to put together a design of what it would take, and then be back to you in the coming months. We just wanted to raise your awareness before we send an email out that excites a lot of our slipholders.
Obviously, I, I, based on what I hear, I think it's important that we basically make a decision to say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to limit our liability, and we're going to, we're going to take some action. We just haven't decided exactly the scope of it yet, but that I think folks need to be on notice fairly quickly that, that we, we, we can't allow this just to go on indefinitely like this.
Just one or two follow-up comments, if I could. Marinas are notorious for not making any money. That's why I believe you all had one bid at one point to buy this, and it was a very low bid. So you're right, this is a destination, this is a very nice piece of property in the county. It's one of our very few water, active waterfront with, where we have all of this. So I think we do have to make a decision about, because it's not going to be a moneymaker. It would be great to break even at some point. Hopefully, that'll happen. I'm going to get in the weeds a little bit. I would greatly caution us against, in the future, having boats that are, cannot be trailered. At some point, we should have sent a letter saying you need to get it out of there, because I have a funny feeling that the boats that are not able to be trailered, we are probably going to end up having to remove at least one or two of them, because if you haven't been able to get your boat fixed, the likelihood of you being able to get it out of the water is probably limited. So I hope that we will really look at that type of thing in the future, and that we will be at market. You know, I think Parks and Rec, you know, we, we often, it's very tough, because we do want to have things that most of our citizens can take advantage of, but I think when you have something like a Marina, maybe it has to have a different set of eyes on it, and you have to say, well, we're going to have to go with market rate, you know, what everybody else is doing, because you have a boat. So, and then not anything to do with any of this, but I am just, I'm, I'm going to ask your attention on why the butterfly garden, which was great when it was done. I went out there, I met with that, I think it was a family that did it. It's a mess. I, I mean, it's overgrown. I was just out at Bills, I tell you, I'm just making the brewery tours. I just want to make sure everything's operating correctly. It needs some attention. I don't know, I, I don't know what that attention is, but since you were here, I just wanted to see if there was something maybe we could do.
Well, I, I, I met the individual that was spearheaded the whole development, and he was getting out of the volunteer business. And so, like a lot of volunteer-driven initiatives, when the volunteers that start it decide to retire and move on, I think, but that, that is the proposed location of the new restaurant and, and tasting room.
And maybe we could just do it a good moe now-
Yes.
-in the meantime, so.
I'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and the only thing I wanted to mention, Ms. Larson, is, you know, when we do the market study and look at the fees, we also look at their operational standards, and I, and you are correct. We, there are things that have happened in that Marina that aren't allowed in other Marinas, you know, and I think when we get to this point of opening this up, we need to bring it into the standard operating procedures of what boat owners can do, what they can't do, whether it's the boxes on the decks that are not consistent or setting in an area. I think there are a lot of things that we can do to bring it into standards. And of course, trailering a boat is one of those that, or the condition of a boat, or a boat that doesn't run or life, there's, there are a lot of things out there that we don't have in our lease that I think we can't add to it. But there are members that have been there 40-plus years and-
Oh, I understand the, what you're up against.
Yeah. And so the last slide I had was really our proposed fee increases for our, our uncovered slips. So this came from our benchmarking, it's kind of elevating them closer to the market average, and we've adjusted a few things that we didn't. A good example is, every other Marina charges, if you, you pay your annual slip fee or your monthly slip fee for in the water, if you store your trailer on that piece of property, you also charged a fee for that. We had been giving that away since we've owned it and, and prior to that. So one of the things that we found is that, you know, we need to be collecting that fee as well. So if you pull your boat out or leave your trailer there, you pay the dry stack, dry storage fee that, so that's a total, when you look down there at the 122% and 196% increase, it's because we, you know, we weren't charging them.
Mr. Carnifex, just clarifying, you're talking about if, if they rent a slip from us, they've not been paying a fee, and now they would pay a percentage of the fee, correct?
They would pay, they would pay a fee, additional fee, to store their boat and/or trailer on land. So we were, we were, I think, the only one that wasn't charging that, so.
Is the, is the $15 charge for the 30 amp service, does that cover the, is that for 30 cent, 30 amp?
Yeah, I mean, since we weren't charging a difference before, we found all the others charging an additional fee. You know, one of the things you'll see in the marinas, they're not all apples to apples. There, some marinas charge by the foot-
Right.
And they charge a larger amount by the foot, you know, for electricity. And that, so we didn't want to go that route and start charging by the foot in our boats, because most of our boats are under 30, under 27 feet and down to 20 feet, you know. So a lot of your larger marinas, they'll have a 40 footer and, you know, and so they do that. So we tried to keep- a 40 footer and, you know, and so they do that. So we tried to keep it a monthly fee and just increase it, you know, slightly.
And that covers our cost?
We believe so, but, you know, but we, we don't have the, the covered slips are on their own meter. They're required to do it. On the uncovered slips, you know, that's something we have to look at and monitor what that is. But yeah, we, they're, they're not on their own meter in the uncovered slips. Yep. Thank you, Alistair.
It'd be nice if they were on their own.
And if you remember, we had that big panel. One of the things we wanted to do was clean that whole waterfront up. And so when you're setting up there on the deck at Billsburg, you had a nice view and moving the tank, moving those big pedestals. So, one of the things, aside from the email and letter, we're sending to the covered, we're going to send a, an email to the slipholders, uncovered slipholders announcing this fee increase and renew their leases. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with that before we send it out. And we will do, plan on doing so tomorrow or before the end of this week, give everybody as much notice as possible.
Yeah, our, our phones automatically turn off tomorrow at 2 o'clock, and they don't turn back on till Monday. Totally kidding.
Phone's off today. I got cursed.
I don't think we have much choice in terms of, in terms of the situation with the, these covered slips especially.
We don't want anyone to get hurt.
Yeah. And we're basically not renewing the lease. That's basically what we're doing. For the time being, until we get it up and running properly.
And I, you know, we'll provide the information you need. And during the budget process, I think make a, or before, if we can, at least on the, where we're going to move forward with. And we're not going to specify exactly what we're doing at this point, other than we're going to work hard over the next couple of months to develop a plan to replace and move forward. So, okay, thank you all.
Just, just, for my, for my information, Johnny, is this, once somebody has a, has a slip, and, and as we say, they, they keep it basically for life?
You continue to pay it, and historically, you, as long as you come back.
And, and is it limited to that person? Or do they pass it on to family members and...
No, it's limited to that person. And, and they could change boats and, you know, I'm, I'm not telling you what's done.
Does the boat have to be registered in their name?
It has to be registered, yes, in their name.
Their name, okay.
Used to be, you could pass it around and sell it if you were leaving.
And, you know, we've, we've, we've found some things that we've had to correct over the last few years related to that, but yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Did you need any, any other action?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that brings us to the end of our board discussions. We have no board considerations this afternoon. So we'll move on to board requests and directives.
The VACO conference went extremely well, I thought. I don't know whether, Ruth, did you bring back the, I think I got a copy of it electronically of the...
Oh, I did bring that. I'm sorry, I didn't bring that, but the changes.
The legislative agenda, and I think what we need to do is, it's, it's actually the agenda within a RADA sheet, so you actually have to put it together. So it's not all one clean thing yet. But as soon as we can get that from VACO, I would, I would like to have that distributed, since, since we basically, you know, like to endorse the, the VACO legislative agenda. We ought to be able to have a good, clean copy of it. But I think we did, did some pretty good work on, on that update at the VACO conference. So Ruth was the one who finally put the blessing on it. So here we go.
That it? Okay. I know that, it was a year better ago when I mentioned about the growing up in school and all that, and the ice age that was coming and everything else, and got chastised up here by a young lady who obviously felt she knew more than what I was taught. But that being said, there's an article in the 1977 Time Magazine that was sent to me and talks about being prepared for the new ice age. So, actually, that was true when I was growing up in school, that everyone was worried about the ice age.
That was during the last ice age, Mr. Eisenhower?
1977. And if you want to look it up on...
I haven't bought a bigger coat.
Yeah. Uh huh. And if you want to look it up, Time Magazine put it out. And, and so it was, it was very unique when it got sent to me. I laughed very much. And, and you know, and that's what we remembered back then. We were worried the world was getting cold. Now we're worried the war, the world is getting warm. I'm sure it's going to get cold and warm. And I'm, I'm just going to live with it either way it goes. But I just wanted, that young lady may want to go back and do a little research on that when she looks at it. And that's all I have on that subject. But I couldn't help but let that one go. And then, we wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And y'all eat as much you can and, and relax and enjoy your families. And we'll come back shortly and keep on our work. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, VACO. We were, three of us went to VACO last week. There were 687-plus attendees. There were great workshops and a lot of great discussion. So glad that we were able to attend that. The Chamber went to the Board of Directors meeting for the Chamber last week, which I thought was a really good meeting. But I also want to highlight one of our colleagues, Mr. Eisenhower. And I think he's mentioned this before in, in last year, but just to make people aware that he is on the Military Affairs Committee, and they sponsor soldiers to get home. They, to, to provide their transportation, I think, is it $300?
It's $300 stipend to help assist with transportation for getting home for Christmas.
Yes. And how many did you help last year?
We did 23 last year.
Yeah, I think that's really tremendous. And, and especially in this area where there's so much military. And so, I appreciate that you do that. And so, and then I just, I did also want to mention that yesterday I met with the President of the WJCA. Don't know whether or not you read that there was, at the last school board meeting, there was quite a number of teachers that turned out regarding pay. And we've heard in our school liaison meeting regarding salaries. And, and so I think that's something that's going to come up at our budget. So I just would, you know, encourage Mr. Stevens to, I know that you do have, you know, conversations with the superintendent. But, you know, hopefully, we can have a collaborative process with the school board and one that's, that, that we can work together on both sides realistically. And, you know, not one where it pits us one against the other, because I don't think that there's anybody up here that doesn't believe in quality education. And, and the fact that we want to recognize our, our teachers. And from what I understand, last year, their health insurance took a bit of a bump. And I don't know if there's something that we know on our side that might help with that. But anyway, and with that, happy Thanksgiving.
So, speaking of VACO, I understand our very own Ruth Larson was elected First Vice Chair of VACO. So we are well-represented. Thank you and congratulations. You do a great job for us. I did, I want to give a shout out to Chris Johnson and our Economic Development, our EDA group. They did put on the business awards last week, and it was over at that event center, the Maine. It was beautiful. Anyone hadn't had a chance to check it out. It's, they stay pretty busy over there with booking all kinds of events. But we, we were able to recognize some of our long operating businesses who've been here for years, including Williamsburg-Jamestown Airport, Enheiser Bush, and Ball Metal? Was it Ball Metal was the third one, I believe? So it was a, it was a well-attended. It was beautiful out there. So shout out to all of our businesses here. And we so appreciate everything that they contribute to the community. But thank you to Chris Johnson for our job well done with Economic Development. Very much appreciated, sir. And with that, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. And I know all the men are going to be doing the dishes on Thursday, just saying.
Paper plates.
All right. Thank you very much. And my, my report's going to be a little bit longer, I think, because I have something in particular I want to, want to address. But let me just begin by, again, echoing congratulations to Supervisor Larson on her election as First Vice Chair at VACO. And that will put her in line, I hope, for the presidency. It'll bring much good attention to James City County. And also, wanted to just mention that at the VACO conference, the Coalition of High Growth Communities met. And we talked in particular about some information about how there appears to be legislation that'll be moving forward that may try to restrict local government authority over land use decisions. And I think it's important for us to tell a very positive story about our use of that authority in addressing important issues such as preserving quality of life of communities and, at the same time, working hard to address the need for affordable housing. And so, we'll be trying to tell that story more actively and publicly in, in coming months, I hope. In addition to that, I also wanted to draw attention to what I'll call the, the four S's. The first is that Saturday, November 26th, is Small Business Saturday. And just wanted to inform the public that I've issued a proclamation declaring November 26th, 2022, Small Business Saturday in James City County, recognizing the important role that's played by small businesses in providing something like 32 million small business, businesses in the United States, where they represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees, that they are responsible for a majority of those who hold jobs in the United States, and that this is an opportunity for our residents and our visitors to support those small businesses by doing their shopping at small businesses on Small Business Saturday, November 26th. We know that Black Friday, as it's sometimes referred to, is an important event, but that it's been dominated in recent years by large national and international companies, and especially internet sales now, which now extends into Cyber Monday. But small businesses sometimes don't have the ability to advertise as fully to attract your attention. But they're vital to our community because they provide services that we can see and touch and feel and get immediate response when we have a concern or a question about them. So I hope everybody will feel that they ought to contribute to making Small Business Saturday a success. Secondly, let me just congratulate the Virginia Department of Transportation for completing the Skiff's Creek Connector Project. And to congratulate this board and previous boards for supporting the need to improve our access to Interstate 64 from our commercial and manufacturing areas. This particular project will now move traffic over to Route 143, where they'll get easy access to Interstate 64, reducing their need to travel through large portions of county roads that are not really designed for that particular purpose. And hopefully, we'll see the benefits of that fairly quickly. And I want to especially thank this board for their support of, of this project, and Mr. Hippel for his involvement with our transportation planning organization and the Transportation Accountability Project for helping to make that come, come into completion. Also wanted to then move on to my third S, which is that a week ago Saturday, I attended the Stuff the Cruiser event that was put on by our police department to provide food for the holidays for those in need. It was, I believe, a tremendous success, and especially another indication of the involvement of our police department in trying to serve our citizens in many aspects of their lives. We, we would hope that at some point, some of those ways in which they serve can be taken over by others who are not as directly involved in the law enforcement aspect, because, you know, puts an added burden on our police department. But certainly, this is an indication that police officers are very much part of the community. And the volunteers who work with the police department and the young people who are involved in the leadership program to try to encourage them to think about law enforcement careers showed up in full force and did a great job helping to provide that food. The final S that I wanted to bring to your attention was that Ms. Larson and I and Mr. Stevens attended recently a school liaison meeting. And I, I read an article in the local newspaper the other day that I thought would be useful for us to put into some greater context. At that meeting, we had some discussion about the plans that the school division has for, or had for forecasting future enrollment. As you know, they receive an annual report projecting enrollment into, into the future. And they provide it in terms of a low projection, sort of mid-level projection, and a high projection. And we've agreed with the schools and the city council over the last several years that we would utilize the low enrollment growth model as the basis for budgeting and for consideration of, of capital. And this year, the schools talked about the possibility of shifting over to the medium or moderate growth scenario instead of the low growth because they saw a significant increase in enrollment this year. We discussed that, and I made it clear that, from the perspective of the Board of Supervisors, and I hope my colleagues will agree that this is the case, that we felt much more confident with the low enrollment figures. Those low enrollment figures really take into account the long-term projections for county growth as opposed of school system growth, as opposed to what's happened in the last two years, which is that students who had gone out of the school system during the pandemic are returning. It's possible that there are just more kids showing up at schools than we anticipate each year, but live births are not increasing at any significant rate. And so, we thought it better to view these two years, for the moment, as anomalous. And that maybe in the next year, we'll see a better indication of whether that growth is actually coming in at a higher rate than we'd anticipated, or as we think it will be more at the low projection numbers. If it's at the low projection numbers, then we see very little growth in elementary school enrollment over the course of the next 10 years. And that's an important consideration because the school board has been asking us to fund the construction of a 10th elementary school. And we've suggested that that's something that we certainly want to do when it's, when there's a demonstrated need, but we don't currently see that need, especially with the anticipated construction of two facilities on existing school property that would provide pre-K spaces that are constructed and programmed for pre-K students as opposed to taking over elementary school classrooms. Some 30 classrooms would be freed up with these two new facilities that could be completed within two years, as opposed to starting the planning for an elementary school in five years and having to deal with the potential of overcrowding if higher enrollment numbers do actually show up. So I, again, I think that it was fairly clear that, that the county's position is that we would continue to use low projections and move ahead with the pre-K buildings, and then see when, where it takes us in a couple of years in terms of, of a needed elementary school. Okay. Cost numbers that were reported in the newspaper, according to the school liaison meeting, have escalated. And we, rather than talking about $26 million for pre, two pre-K centers each with 250 students, the school administrators told us that they expected that number to be more like $40 million for those two buildings. The $40 million that was anticipated for construction of an elementary school to house, for 750, six, was it 650?
750.
750 students would be $60 million for the facility and somewhere around $7 million for the land, bringing us to a total of $67 million. And if we wanted to include pre-K in that facility, we could add on to it for an additional number of $13 million or more, which would bring us over $80 million for that, that particular project. Again, our sense was that we need the pre-K centers as soon as possible, and that that will free up space in existing elementary schools, that under the low... that will free up, uh, space in existing elementary schools that under the low enrollment projections would allow us, uh, to, uh, function at, uh, uh, less than 90% capacity, uh, for, uh, the next decade, uh, without any trailers at, at the facilities. Uh, and that, uh, if, if, uh, it turned out that the growth is faster than we anticipated, we would have opportunities in the next, uh, couple of years to revisit this question, uh, more rapidly. We do have, uh, sort of a, uh, an elementary school built into our long-term CIP project, uh, budget, but not into the next five years. And so I did want to make it clear that, that, uh, we do anticipate that the, the schools are going to be coming to us with, uh, expectations of, uh, a need for significant local help in a number of areas, including, uh, compensation for teachers, uh, and that the price tags on many of these things are going to be quite high and that, uh, we're prepared, I think, to recognize our needs, uh, in these areas, but we also have to have a clear set of priorities about what will allow us to accomplish the greatest good, uh, for the dollars that we do have available and, uh, what the realistic amount of money available to us will be in these instances. So I just wanted to, to bring, uh, your attention to that discussion at the School Liaison Committee, and I'd invite, uh, Mr. Stevens or Ms. Larson to, to comment any further if you would like.
Thank you. Wrapped it up.
I think you covered it very well. Sid.
Okay. So, thank you. Uh, and with that, I will simply, uh, um, wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving as well. And, uh, since we're going to a friend's house for dinner, I won't be doing, doing dishes at my house, but I may help out with theirs. And with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, one, one thing I'd like just to, uh, share with the community that occurred, and it was really a new initiative for us in 2022, it was our Repair Fair and Recycling Expo. Um, our Clean County Commission and General Services staff, really spearheaded with Cassidy Cordova running things to, for, for us, held their second, uh, Repair Fair and Recycling Expo this past weekend. So, uh, we are done for 2023, but it was a drive-through recycling, shredding and indoor, you had volunteers fixing items. Uh, it seems like it was a, a very well laid out. I went through it Saturday myself. The volunteers were extremely excited for those coming through. I, I think it is a very well-done event, something that serves the community well and something that we would expect to probably make an annual event, likely in the fall of each year. So if you missed it this year, hold on to your things, don't throw them away. The intent is to make them, put them back into good use and to have volunteers help. And so I do want to say thank you to our Clean County Commission, our staff and all of the volunteers that helped make that a success this past weekend. And, and I would add just Happy Thanksgiving, safe travels to all for those that are traveling. And while for most of us, it's a, it's a happy time of year. For many in our community, our friends, neighbors and maybe our relatives, it's a sad time where they've lost somebody and it reminds them of those things. So just look out for each other while we're out there on the roads or in our homes and around our friends and family. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Stevens. Uh, can I just ask for a brief update on, uh, our, um, leaf collection program?
Um, our leaf collection program, we have changed our rules. We did have a limited time where you could bring leaves un, um, for, without a charge to our Jolly Pond drop-off. We had extended that, and I'll look to Grace Boone, to January 12th. I believe January 12th, but certainly now through early January, you can bring them to Jolly Pond. They do not have to be in plastic bags. They need to come in, they can be, you have to unbag them when you dispose of them. They could be in a trailer, you need to have your trailer covered so you don't lose all your leaves bringing them to our convenience center. And then we do have cycles where we're coming through the community on a schedule we had published that begins in early December. Uh, that would be on our website in terms of the dates for your neighborhood where you can put back, leaves in clear bags that we can see and we'll pick up to 30 bags at each household as we come through. And we only come by once, so if you miss that scheduled time, the other piece is either to call us back and schedule, you know, pay for us to come pick them up or come to, um, bring them to Jolly Pond.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Uh, so I'll need a motion now to, uh, enter closed session for the, uh, under, on the Code section list, uh, list below, a discussion of a prospective, uh, uh, business industry or industry, uh, where no previous, uh, announcement has been made of this business or industry's interest in locating or expanding facilities pursuant to Section 2.23711A5 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved.
We have motion, Mr. Stevens, call roll, please.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in closed session.[1233.71]